Good evening and welcome to the November 29, 2018 Evening Business Meeting. Please join me, oh, Administrator Crupp, please take the role.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. We have County Council, Stephen Madcor here this evening, and then serving as your clerk to the Lord, Mary Rathke. Start the role with Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for So the Board will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Housing Authority Board for the next item, and I'd like to introduce Commissioner Paul Reynolds. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Probably a very short item, and so, Don, what's up?
Well, you have the consent agenda, and I'll have Mary Rathke read you the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Okay, today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda: Approval of Amendment Number Three to the Financial Consulting Service Contract with David Paul Rosen Associates for Financial Advisory Services; Approval of a Construction Contract with North Pacific Construction and Remodeling for the Repair and Modernization of Public Housing Duplex; and a Board Order and Resolution Number 1934, Delegating Contract Signing Authority for the Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. And that concludes the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Do any Commissioners want to remove an item from the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
They moved in second that we approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Announce that the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. And Paul, there is a celebration going on downstairs where there's pie at 6:30.
Pie?
Yeah, pie.
Free pie.
Free pie. So if you're willing to stay around a little while, actually, it's not that far off.
Thank you.
Love to have you.
Thank you.
So pie-throwing contest?
No, it's only if you threaten. All right.
That could be fun.
All right, with that, we have a presentation, and I think we have a guest in the audience.
Well, we are honored by the presence of Dr. John McLaughlin here this evening. He's just able to tie his horse out down below and come on up to join us here. He's going to talk about Clackamas County and the history, and, you know, he just got off the Oregon Trail, I understand, so he might be a little dusty, but we're happy to have him here.
First of all, ladies and gentlemen, I wanted to apologize for not coming when I was invited earlier on. I wasn't sure I was going to make it today because the second of the wagon trains, this one under Thomas Lennox, arrived just three days ago to Fort Vancouver. Jesse Applegate's train arrived just a few days before that, and we're very, very busy at the fort for several reasons. One is a lot of the people coming over have used up their provisions. We're making arrangements to provide loans for them with provisions to take them through the next year perhaps, providing them with seed grain and so forth. And also, there are a few people, a few families, wives that have lost their husbands on the train, and we're trying to make arrangements to house them temporarily with their children, and so it's very, very confused in some ways at the fort because we normally don't deal with such a large number of people coming in. Over a thousand people have come in on these two trains, so I'm sorry to report that Jesse Applegate lost, I think, three of his children, drowned on coming down the Columbia River, and so it is a very difficult time for us. Now, I don't understand anything about the history of Clackamas County because, for one thing, the wolf meetings were just, the last of the wolf meetings were just held in Shambui a short time ago, and I'm here to actually express my reservations about this whole thing because the United Kingdom, the United States, has not yet determined where those boundaries are going to be between their two territories. And the fact that that decision was made to extend it all the way to the Alaska Territory in North America, that's not going to be acceptable to the Crown. They want access to the Pacific, they want access to the Pacific Ocean, and if that doesn't happen, I mean, neither the United States nor the Crown want another war, but the United Kingdom will not permit the denial of access to the Columbia River Portage, and I think you operated well before you should have, and when the wolf meeting, the last wolf meeting was held in Shambui, some of our former employees there are settled in French Prairie, and I made the suggestion to them that don't make a determination about territorial boundaries, depend, form your own independent government. Unfortunately, I don't think that was ever brought forward. I didn't send formal representatives from the Hudson's Bay Company to discuss that. Now, I've been directed by the Board of Governors of the Hudson's Bay Company to actually send the people that are coming in onto this side of the river. George Applegate is making his land claim there available for the wagon trains, and we're trying to make arrangements to get the wagon trains up the river to be at that location. The, so, we're doing everything we can to facilitate this, but the reason I sent them on this side of the river in the direction of the Crown is the intent of the Crown is to have the Columbia River as being the boundary between the United Kingdom and the United States in terms of the territorial division. And so, I think the wolf meetings were, made their decision too far ahead of time. Now, it's been delayed, the decision of the boundary between the United Kingdom and the United States Territories has been pulled back several times. They were supposed to make that decision in 1813 originally, but there was an intervening word, and that kind of messed things up. But in any case, I want to inform you that I hope this is resolved. Hudson's Bay Company is actually pulling back, unfortunately, some of its outpost and so forth because they're concerned about where the territorial boundary will be, but if you have some questions of me in terms of my position, I'll be happy to entertain them.
I think you've answered all the questions. I say bring it on.
I hope you're not talking about a war.
Well, we beat them before we can do it again. Well, I hope your wife, Marguerite, is fine.
Yes, she is, but she's also involved, of course, in assisting the wives and children that have come into the fort, so she is very busy as well.
And how is the beaver trade?
Well, the beaver trade is actually, it's part of the reason, and if I might take a moment.
Please.
Of course, the trade of Asia has built up, and unfortunately, as a result, both in Europe and in the eastern part of the United States, beaver hats are becoming out of fashion, and the silk hats are becoming in fashion, so the beaver trade is dropping. I'm arguing with the Hudson's Bay Company not to withdraw its outpost because I feel no matter where those territorial boundaries there are, the commercial keep, the fact we have ships, the fact that we have all these outposts, Hudson's Bay Company should be, should do well here if it actually acts as a basis of commerce in both segments of the territory wherever they be, and I'm rather disappointed that they're deciding to pull back.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
So, Dr. McLaughlin, I'm just curious.
McLaughlin, if you please.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'm curious if you could give me, give us your opinion on the status of the health of the people that you're interacting with, given your background.
Indeed, I was a physician when I was with the Northwest Fur Company, and that was many, many years ago. I was sent here by the Hudson's Bay Company, actually, originally, the Northwest Fur Company was located here, and the Hudson's Bay Company took it over, and I actually worked with the Northwest Fur Company before I came to the Oregon Territory, and they offered me the position of the chief actor for the whole Hudson's Bay Company here in the Oregon Territory. When I came over, it was strictly administrative. We have other doctors serving the fort. I do not act as a physician anymore, but of course, there are all kinds of challenges to people here and so forth. In terms of services, I've actually lost, I've actually had, one of my sons took a terrible fall in the, who came out here, and eventually it resulted in his death. It happened in the southern part of the Territory, that was Joe McLaughlin. And my another son, John, my another son, John, he was sent to the outpost in St. King River, near the Russian Territory, and he was murdered, so, you know, I've experienced tragedies in my own family.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We were going to do a photo with.
Okay. A photo op.
Photo op. Nice.
Yes, as long as we have an understanding that, you know, eventually, the boundaries you set aren't going to be the boundaries that are going to be held in the future, then if you're willing to accept that that's a possibility, I would like to take a picture of you.
Change is inevitable.
You're not selling out, right?
I know nothing about that. I don't even know what you mean, highways.
All right, one, two, three, and one more. Good. On one, two, three.
I never seen a portrait of John McLaughlin smiling, nor a photograph, and I'm still not smiling.
As you can imagine, at 6'4", I think he was, he's a pretty imposing figure. Also, he was the mayor of Oregon City in 1851. Sixty-six people voted, and he got 44 of those. I don't know who his competition was, but anyway, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to visit the McLaughlin House. Yeah, they, all those things, pronunciations, I don't know.
It's McLaughlin.
It's like Humberson.
Yeah, that's it. Like you're clearing your throat, yes.
We learn things every day.
But also, I'll bet you that they were one of the largest employers at 600 employees, and beaver hats, obviously, styles change, and, but we still have beavers that are alive, thank goodness, at least some of us might think so. All right, with that, we'll move on to citizen communication, and we have some folks from Malala, Rob, and I think it's Dale, right? Come on up and give us your name, and you're from Malala, I know that already, and tell us what you'd like to talk about. I have a feeling I know.
Well, I'm Robert May.
And I'm Dale Geisy.
We're neighbors, both living on Kylo Road, just west of Malala, near the intersections of 213 and 211 highways. I'm here tonight to speak about a problem in our neighborhood. In June of this year, ground was plowed and prepared for planting right across the street from us there, and water lines were installed, irrigation system and all that. My wife and I were pretty interested and intrigued by it all. In the 28 years that we've lived there, there's never been anything down there, and so we were actually kind of thinking that was all right, that property was actually going to be used for something. The road there is a private road, and it's maintained by the owners. There's eight homes on the road, and the front doors of our homes are less than 100 feet from the property across the street. Anyway, within a, right away, we realized that there was going to be about 17 acres of hemp seedlings planted, and still no problem as far as we were concerned, as we thought. Within a few weeks, my wife and I started experiencing allergy-like symptoms, headaches, sneezing, HGI's, et cetera. Thought it was a little strange because neither one of us suffer from allergies normally. And as the hemp matured, the symptoms got worse. In late September, after the hemp was harvested, the symptoms basically disappeared. So I wasn't really sure what to think about that, it kind of had my suspicions, but, and then after visiting with some of my neighbors, we found out that there were other people also in our neighborhood that were suffering with the same types of things. Also during the growth season for hemp, which in this case was June through September, the odor from the plants became unbearable. I mean, it permeated our homes, everything in it, our clothing, our cars. It was so bad that the normal family get-togethers and having friends over for barbecues and stuff this summer didn't.
Just couldn't happen.
No, it was that bad. I had no idea it was, it could possibly get that bad, but it did. Also, for us, my wife and I, our well water levels dropped quite a bit as they were irrigating, and black sand started to show up and make its way into the house, and I eventually had to install a filter to try to get rid of most of that, and I succeeded in getting rid of most of it, but I guess basically, I'm, this stuff has grown so close to the home, and there's only so much I can do to, you know, remedy these issues on my own, so I'm hoping that in the future, these sites might be placed a little further away from residential neighborhoods.
Like a quarter mile.
Would be helpful.
We're not even allowed to have our windows open because it's so bad. It just is so strong in there, it gives you headaches, and, but I guess we're out of time.
Hey, so now it's your turn.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, I thought we were sharing the time, so I apologize.
Oh, no, you've got.
Anyway, it is so strong out there that as it gets colder, as it gets later in the season, it gets so strong that it's impossible to have your windows open, you have to run your air conditioning 24/7 because it's just unbearable. I get in my car, I go to a gas station, the guy thinks I have marijuana in my car because it smells so bad, and this is, it just is, is not reasonable to have to go through. And I would like, is it possible he could elaborate a little farther out of my time, or is it only me?
Oh, no, I mean, let's say you can share the six minutes.
He's had more time to prepare for this, so I would like to allot a little bit of time.
Well, I pretty much covered the issues that have really impacted us, and it makes me sad to think that the only home that my wife and I have been able to build.
Yeah, we built these homes ourselves, both of us, you know, and I would guess our property values, 21 homes on that site and a premier air park for Skydive Oregon, is probably depreciated $2.5 to $3 million. Nobody is going to want to live next to that strong of a smell at their house. I mean, this stuff has grown literally since we owned the road, 10 feet from our property line.
Do you know if they have water rights?
They do. That whole area was under the same water right.
As we are.
In 1966, George Kylo owned that entire area out there, and Flyer Haven eventually came in as he sold properties and things got divided up and so forth, so the farm that's growing it now was originally part of that. They have evidently the same water rights that we do, so I don't know how that works as far as one of us going, you know, taking issue with the other under this.
Or how much you can pull out of the ground at one time, you know.
Yeah, I'm not that familiar with.
But we've had some well issues since this has happened.
Yeah. You know, sadly, or, I mean, hemp is, a lot of people are thinking of growing hemp because it's not been done, and there's a market for it. I know that there are folks who have struggled with Christmas trees and stuff, who are now looking at hemp grows because there's a profit in it, and, but it's a crop, and for us, there's literally nothing we can do. I would suggest that we can reach out to the ag department and address your concerns. I sat next to one of their directors just the other night, and I'll be happy to mention the concerns, but I'm afraid as a county, we have zero control over hemp. Now marijuana, we do, but.
That was, that was one of the things that I am a little confused about because the odors for marijuana production are somewhat controlled, and yet hemp has just as strong an odor, and especially when it's planted acres at a time, and there is no control whatsoever for the odor, so.
There's no outdoor control for marijuana growth, only greenhouse controls.
I'd also like to mention that we've also had a, somebody parking his property, cut the fence and steal marijuana, or hemp, sorry.
Thank you.
From this property, so it's also an issue for.
So one thing, and you're, are you sure it's hemp?
There were two different colors of plant in that field this year. Around the outside edges, it was green, the inside, the plants had purple flowers on them. It was short, bushy stuff with big buds.
So one thing you can do is make a complaint, and as far as I know, the ag department actually comes out and tests it, and if it is actually marijuana, then unless they're permitted, they can shut them down. They cut them, that's my understanding. I know that has happened at various ones. I mean, I wouldn't suggest you go over and cut it down, but I would suggest lodging a complaint, and someone can come and take a sample. I know they do that. Other than that, I wish I had a solution. It is a problem, and it is confusing to people because they do look the same and.
Smells the same.
Smell the same.
My final word would be, I wish we had reasonable setbacks, you know, to allow for this smell.
Yeah, and I know, the right to farm is a right we don't have any control over, but I will mention it, but I do recommend that. Is it growing right now? It's not.
No, they harvested it in late September.
When they plant it in the first part and it starts to grow, lodge a complaint, and someone from the Department of Ag will come out and take a sample and take it in, and sometimes the THC.
It's the THC. If it's, I think it's 3%, I don't hold me to that, but I think it's above 3% or something like that of THC, then it's marijuana, not hemp. Okay. And if they've got a license for hemp, it's going to be under that level.
Yeah, there's no license for hemp, as far as I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Yes, thanks for hearing us out.
Thank you, appreciate it. Monica in Virginia.
We're here about the same neighborhood and the same issues. I know that you had just stated that there's not a lot you can do. I kind of wanted to touch bases a little bit about the health issue.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Virginia Redding.
I'm Monica.
Give me the cards, please.
And anyway, so, you know, I was raised with, I was born with health and breathing issues, and so I've kind of battled them my whole life. I've been raised around farms, around caneries that can, that process cabbage to broccoli, so I know what all those smells are, and this is totally different. I was taking, I was taking lots of broncade and the inhalers, and it just wasn't even relieving it. It just got so much, and we would be wakened at 3 o'clock in the morning by hearing gunshots. I'm assuming they're shooting for getting the deer out of it, I'm just assuming, because there's no lights out there, so, but to hear gunshots at 3:00 AM is a little bit concerning considering we're right by the main intersection of 211 and 213, and it just gets so bad, and it smelled so horrible that I had company come over, and then they had to leave because of the smell, even though they were in the house. And at this point, if we were to sell, I don't think we could get our money out of it. I think that our, I think our property has appreciated a lot, and maybe we need to file and see if we can't get our taxes reduced on it. I mean, I'm sorry, but they use a lot of pesticides. We're all on wells, you know, and as they put, leach the pesticides on these plants and in the soil, it goes into all of our water supply, and, you know, we're right there by Skydive Oregon. So, you know, you like to go outside and enjoy the sights, or when you go out and mow the lawn, you shouldn't have to wear a respirator or a face mask, and it just, it's kind of depreciating the quality of our lives, and we're kind of at a loss, and it's like, it's a sad thing. They didn't have to come and tell us that they were planting this or have concerns. I mean, Clackamas County, you know, I, we used to live in Washington County, we loved it there, we love it here, but I don't think Clackamas County passed to have this, you know, but yet there's a lot growing here. And our plea is, at this point, is to just ask that the boundaries get put a lot further out to where they shouldn't be around, they shouldn't be around people or, you know, schools, or it just, it just ruins the quality of our lives.
All right, I mean, I appreciate that.
Thank you for listening.
You bet.
My name is Monica, and I asked for your help because from the moment it was planted to even days after it was harvested, I could not breathe. It congested me so bad that I had four or five nasal infections, it got so bad, I had to go to the immediate care, get antibiotics, inhaler, two or three other medicines. It got so bad, I had to take a week off of work, and all because they feared it went to my, would go into my lungs farther and become pneumonia. I have a coworker who couldn't make it here tonight, and she has to have her EpiPen at her side at all times at work at Safeways because the smell is so bad there. It closes her throat, and she could go into shock, and she could die. I mean, the smell is so bad. It's traveling not only to our homes right across the way, but across the intersection to the city of Malala, to a busy shopping district. I mean, that's the only store in town, the only grocery store, and it could potentially kill someone. I mean, if she forgot her EpiPen and medical couldn't get there on time, she could die, and, I mean, if it went into my lungs and became pneumonia, I could have died too. I mean, I had to take so much time off of work, it cut into my pay, I was afraid of being fired because of how much time I had to take off. I went to the coast for, what was it, a weekend, cleared up just fine, I could breathe, and it was nice, and then I come home, and it's back again, and, I mean, what can I do? It's just a health hazard. I mean, if it was an industrial plant next door giving off a smell that caused people to come sick, you guys would care, and you would do something, but now they're poisoning our air and making us sick, and you're telling me there's nothing you can do? I have to live with this? I have to work with this? I have to go to work sick? I have to go to work sick? I have to be homesick? And I have to worry that I could become so sick I have to be hospitalized? I mean, how many times do I have to go to the doctor, get antibiotics, inhalers, and two or three other medicines that it starts to become a problem for you guys? I mean, and I'm not the only one. I mean, so many people on our block are suffering the same symptoms. And I'm just afraid if it gets worse and they plant more, I mean, how many other people are gonna get sick? How many other people's lives are gonna be at risk? I mean. So many other things, businesses, that cause public health problems. It's on the news instantly and everyone starts caring. Everyone starts doing something. There's some kind of control board or something, but yet this, there's nothing and we just have to suffer?
Well, I can assure you, we care. I mean, we are very concerned about marijuana specifically. This is the first time I've actually heard somebody complain about hemp. I, but I understand it's very similar plant, if it's not the same plant. But, you know, all I can tell you is, reach out to your legislature and see what they can do to address the concern. Because it's a crop, they determine, well, even marijuana, even, well, marijuana's a crop and hemp is less restrictive than marijuana. You could literally grow it anywhere, right up to your neighbor and there's noth- we don't have the ability to do setbacks for agriculture.
Have the authority.
We don't have the authority to do that. But it's a public health issue and an issue that, you know, we can bring up to our public health folks and see if there's any opportunity to, to address it. But I assure you, we care.
It affects the air quality so bad. Anything grown outdoors smells like it too. Like I grow mint for my rabbit and it stinks so bad. When I give it to her, she starts sneezing and coughing too. I mean, it smells so strong and so bad. It affects everything.
I'm sure you're right. So I think, Paul, you were.
Well, first of all, I suffer from severe hay fever myself and so grass, plants and so forth. So I first came to Oregon in nineteen seventy-nine. I landed in Lane County. And I worked next to an alfalfa field and they were farming for hay and so forth. And I would, by ten, eleven o'clock, my eyes would actually swell and blister shut. And I had to go home and I had the head pounding. I had sinus infections. I had severe hay fever allergies. I had my esophagus swell up to the point I couldn't breathe. I've gone into systemic shock, so I know what that's all about. So I get, I really truly can empathize with you. I had no idea that hemp had such, the similar impacts of marijuana, which I'm also allergic to that as well. But, so, I think that we can probably reach out to our legislators, our legislators, and see from a health standpoint if there's something that can be done. We, you know, I don't think that that's really fair or tolerable to have severe impacts on something that is not regulated by the state. Marijuana's regulated by the state. Hemp is a product of that, so to speak. But when the THC level is below a certain point, it's called hemp. When it's above a certain level, it's called something else. So as Jim was trying to allude to, but I had no idea that it was as severe. So, and knowing that it's not regulated, maybe, maybe there's some setbacks, issues we can look at. And I would think that if the property owner or the people farming it knew what the health impacts were and how they're impacting other people, they might be a little bit more careful or help, I would hope. But I think, I'm inclined to, knowing that, I'm inclined to reach out to our legislators and see, and our health experts, and see if there's something that we can do as far as a setback at least.
Thank you for your time.
Welcome. Martha.
I just wanted to say, as I was listening to this, there are three things that basically.
Martha, your mic's not on.
I'm sorry. That have been said that I'd like to mention that I really think you should take action on. Because you don't, you're not helpless with this and we do care about it. But I think what the conversation has been at our level, we can't legislate anything until the legislature acts. And this seems to be an emerging issue. This is the first time we've heard it. So the first piece is, it's a public health issue. So when you talk about it with your legislators, and we can help with that, frame it as a public health issue that really is affecting you in a way that is detrimental to your health. That's key, okay? And so the second piece is, I would definitely make going to the Department of Ag a priority because it may be that it's not hemp and that's what you have to determine. So the public health, frame it like that. And we can certainly help provide information of who the right people might be to connect with that. So if we, so we can do something in that we can provide you with avenues or connections to do that. And then the third thing is truly, this sounds like it has to be a legislated fix. Because what happens is, the legislature makes these policies and then counties have to implement the policies that the legislature makes. In many ways, they give us some rules, guidelines. But the bottom line, they oftentimes put counties, this is my little issue with the legislature, where we're the implementers. So we're the ones that on the ground with citizens like you have to figure out what works and what doesn't work. And it may not exactly match with the policies or the rules that they have put forward. So it's also us as your advocates, as elected officials with other fellow elected officials, to start addressing that from a legislative perspective. And we meet with them frequently. I think we are gonna have a meeting with them, colleagues, sooner than later.
Couple, well, AOC's a couple of weeks.
AOC, we can bring it up at the Association of Oregon Counties. But also, we work individually with our, we have a legislative delegation that represents this county. So I think this is something that we can bring up for you. So when we say we can't do anything, it's not that we can't do anything. It's just that we have to work through a process because of the way our governance system is set up. And I think that we can, I think that we can do that for you. And I think if you make sure that Mary has all your contact information. Well, you know, it's one of the reasons you fill out cards, that we can, we can take some action on this.
I didn't read that on my phone or email. I'll give that to you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Sharing that with us.
See, we don't, oh, yeah, we still have one person. Sonya wanted to mention something.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I'm a family law lawyer. I'm not a lawyer that looks at trespass and these kinds of issues. But I do remember studying this issue in law school where certain smells or things could be considered a trespass. And I don't know if you've talked to a lawyer to see if that might be something that you might possibly have a legal course of action. I'm just, you know, law by the internet, you know, isn't always the best framework of trying to assess an issue. But while you've been talking, I've been looking up some things. And there are some protections for farming in Oregon, it appears. But there may be exceptions for serious injury. I'm not sure. But I would suggest also looking at that to see if there's any possible way. Because hearing, I can't remember your name was, Monica. Hearing Monica, you know, saying, you know, that it causes pneumonia and that she has a friend who has to carry an EpiPen, that's just beyond, in my mind, the noxious smells. I did have the wonderful opportunity of going out into our rural communities, going to Jerry Farm, going to Hog Farm, smelling the wonderful smells that you could keep smelling and smelling and smelling and smelling. And it's, it's pretty obnoxious. But what you're describing is a little more than something that's uncomfortable that you expect when you live in a rural area. You expect the normal types of farming smells. But what you're saying sounds like it's a little bit different than that. So let us know. We are a county commission. We are limited in what we can do, obviously, as far as our legislative authority and making people or do things. But we are influencers. We do connect with our legislators. And we really, I think I can speak for all of my colleagues, very much appreciate you coming and sharing this because this is how you educate us and have us, give us the ability to help you. So thank you.
Just additionally, and I don't know, we are going to be, probably have a policy session on a home rule county versus a statutory county. Like Martha said, we take what the legislature says and we put it into our code. If we're a home rule, we have some more, more abilities to regulate land use and various things. But we haven't really had a presentation. I know that various cities have home rule or not and counties are the same. Is Multnomah County home rule?
Sure is.
Yeah, Multnomah County's home rule and we're statutory. And so we have to kinda do what the legislature tells us to do. But we're gonna be talking about that, so keep in touch. Yeah, maybe we can do something about it. All right, next we have Don Kingsborough, who was Citizen of the Year in West Lynn last year.
And he bakes a darn good cookie.
And Marissa?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Kingsborough, I live in West Lynn and with me is Marissa Jaeger, who's a member of Warner Grange as I am. Before I begin my presentation, Dr. John McLaughlin, and I'm sure I can't pronounce that correctly, came to Washington, to Fort Vancouver, from Fort William, Ontario. And I'm proud to say that my parents were married in Fort William, Ontario, and they made it to Oregon City as he did. So I don't know that we're brothers, but, you know, we originated in a similar area. In any event, my purpose of being here is to make a report to you on the Granges in Clackamas County, the Clackamas-Pamona Granges. And so I will do that. What I want to tell you is the good things that we do in your community. Beaver Creek Grange has given school supplies to the Molalla River Academy and dictionaries to Butte Creek Grade School. Dictionaries are a common thread among Granges in Oregon, Washington, Pennsylvania, all across the United States, as it is with Lions Clubs and Elks Clubs and other people. Beaver Creek Grange also installed for public safety a AED in their hall. And their hall is used by the Beaver Creek Planning Group, the Beaver Creek Lions, and a theater group. So the AED is important. Redland Grange continues to feed the homeless down at Clackamas Park every Monday. And it's quite a commitment on their part. Some members spend part of their Sunday preparing food and then they serve it on Monday. They also do a road cleanup on, forgotten which road they do it on. But they do a road cleanup there and they kinda goofed this month in that the county didn't have the equipment ready for them, so they had to put it off. And they have invited you to a Christmas party on December fourteenth for the community. Sunnyside Grange donated money to the Oregon Trail Elementary School Jog-a-thon. They gathered food for the Oregon Food Bank. They had a blood drive and according to the Red Cross, they had gathered enough blood to save sixty-three lives. At that event, they also had a fire safety talk from Clackamas County Fire and a bunch of Girl Scouts manned the kitchen for them. Molalla Grange donated, donates monthly to the Molalla Adult Community Center. They've sent scholarships of fifteen hundred dollars and a thousand dollars to Molalla High School senior, senior winners who have started the colleges of their choice. Molalla also donates the hall to the Red Cross for a blood drive. And they donate their hall every week to the cleaners for food distribution in Molalla. Springwater Grange, one of Ken Humberton's favorites. At our breakfast one month, we, in our tip jar, we raised seventy-nine dollars, which is going towards the flagpole. And I don't know if you're aware, the Clackamas-Pamona Grange has partnered with the VFW to build the flagpole at the Veterans. I never know the right word. You know what I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Veterans Transition Center.
Veterans Trans, okay, all right.
Fets Village, how's that?
We had a Halloween party for the community. We had a community fair where the superintendent of the Estacada School District came out and volunteered to be in the dunk tank. And to his chagrin, he had been working with his son, I think his son's about eight years old, on throwing a baseball. So his son was going all around the audience begging quarters so he could throw, throw the ball and put his dad in the dunk tank. So, Ken, we're gonna get you in the dunk tank next year.
As long as the temperature's above eighty.
We had a hundred and fifty of our neighbors at that event. Brother Ken only came and ate pie, but. We celebrated National Night Out with about forty neighbors out and Sheriff's K-9 Unit was there. We had a candidates forum, which was attended by eight candidates and we had a free spaghetti dinner that night. Warner Grange has given about a hundred and seventy dictionaries to two schools in the Canby District, Karas and Lee. Plus, each of those schools has a program. One has a program where English-speaking students are trying to learn Spanish and the other school has a program where Spanish-speaking students are trying to learn English. So we gave dictionaries that are English, Spanish, Spanish, English. And the quality of this dictionary is sufficient that when I took it on a trip to Venezuela, I was able to communicate a little bit. So it's a pretty good dictionary and we've given those dictionaries to those. Our hall is donated regularly to Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, and a homeschool theater group. We also donated school supplies to a Canby Transitional School, hosted a Bluegrass concert. And I'm going to let Marissa talk in a few minutes about cuddle cots. So our Pamona Grange, which I mentioned earlier, has adopted the philosophy, adopted the job, the responsibility of paying for it. And I think we've already paid for that flagpole. It's gonna be established pretty soon. I'm not sure when. Okay, I have some invitations. Beaver Creek Grange has a breakfast on the first Saturday of each month and that's this Saturday coming. Sunnyside Grange on December fifteenth will hold an Old Time Fiddler's Christmas Jam, potluck lunch at noon and jamming of Christmas songs afterwards. And Santa will be there, especially for Sonia. Redland Grange, I mentioned, is having a Christmas party on December thirteenth. Springwater Grange, this coming Saturday, is having our breakfast from seven to eleven. We have live music. We're set up in the main hall. Our tables are decorated absolutely beautifully. You'll be amazed at the decorations. And we have a piano player that will be there playing Christmas songs during breakfast. Warner Grange, oh, Warner Grange. Okay, remember last time I was before you, I had another pretty young lady with me? She was from Clark's Grange and she presented you with a check. Well, Marissa, in a few minutes, is gonna ask you for your own checks. On the twentieth of December at Warner Grange, Marissa is gonna be presented with the National Grange Award for the Youth Project of the Year for all of the Granges in thirty-eight states in the United States. She'll tell you a little bit about her project, which was raising money for cuddle cots. And she'll explain to you what a cuddle cot is. So at our Grange on the twentieth, we'd love all of you to come. We're actually gonna have a member of the National Grange Executive Committee there that will present the award to Marissa. We have a six-thirty potluck and a seven-thirty meeting. And there's a free waffle breakfast hosted by Harding Grange. So you go out there in Fisher's Mill area and get your Christmas tree and then go to Harding Grange, you get a free waffle breakfast. Last of all, thank you, Don Crupp, for always keeping the commission on an even level, making citizens feel welcome, and making Clackamas County better. We hope for you a very exciting retirement with hours and hours of fun and adventure with those grandchildren.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience in letting me go overtime.
So I have to ask you one thing. You said a kettle what?
A cuddle cot. Marissa is our chairman. Do you want me to tell him briefly?
Well, I wanted to test Ken and see if he knows what it is. Ken?
I know what it is.
Well, tell us what it is.
When a child is still born, oftentimes hospitals take the child away from the parent immediately, which doesn't give the parent an opportunity for a proper, I guess, goodbye and a time to grieve. So this is a device that keeps the child from deteriorating while the parents have a chance to say goodbye after a suitable amount of time.
Wow.
Did you have to use one?
No, luckily.
So yes, the Warner Grange is working on raising money to put cuddle cots in local hospitals. We started the project after another Grange came to us. That, the other Grange was Clark's Grange and they came to us in May of twenty seventeen and they said, hey, we raised the money to do this and we're putting our cuddle cot in Lament Falls. Is there any way that you guys could raise the money to place one elsewhere? Is there any way that you guys could raise the money to place one elsewhere? And they brought the project to me and I just took off with it. I, we put on our first benefit dinner and silent auction fundraiser for cuddle cots, and we expected about five thousand dollars to be raised with that. We raised over twenty-three thousand dollars, and we were able to place seven cuddle cots in the local area. There is now one at Willamette Falls, one at Providence-St. Vincent's, Legacy Emanuel, Legacy Good Samaritan, Legacy Meridian Park, Legacy Mount Hood, and one at St. Charles, Out and Bend. And hopefully with the next fundraiser that I ask that you, if you are able to come and attend, it would be wonderful to have you. We are hoping to raise over forty thousand dollars and be able to place one in the twenty-eight remaining hospitals in the state of Oregon that need them. I have spoken with many nurses and many of the hospital staff, and not only is it just a relief to the families and the moms that have to go through this heart-wrenching ordeal of carrying a baby from anywhere from twenty to twenty weeks to full term and have to say goodbye right after delivery, but it's also easing the time that the nurses have to say, I'm sorry, but you'll have to say goodbye. So we're just asking for your support and just letting you know that this is what's going on in our Grange and. Yeah.
There's information, I've left a bulletin, I don't know if Don passed them out yet, but I left you a Grange bulletin, and in there I marked all of the activities that's mentioned that have been done in Clackamas County by our local Granges. And there's information about our cuddle cot auction that's coming up.
April thirteenth, correct?
April thirteenth, yes, yes.
Well, that's not the answer I expected from you, Ken, I'm a little bit, wow, I mean, that's quite the story. I have no idea what that term meant.
Unfortunately, there's a lot of advertisement, if that's the right word, a lot of notoriety about children that die of SIDS or, or other early childhood diseases. But stillborn children are hidden from view, not really talked about. It's a, it's a niche that Marissa and Clark's Grange really hit on, hit on that just hasn't been helped. And I've been at the presentations with Marissa to the hospitals, and the nurses are, are just overwhelmed with joy. One, I don't know exactly what her title is, one CEO of the Mount Hood Hospital told me just a few days ago they have used it, and the one we presented to them, and she had tears in her eyes. Yes, I did, lose one.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for listening.
And you can't come back for one year because you've used a lot of time, Don. Oh, Martha?
Yeah, I do, I do have one question for you guys, because you've just rattled off a number of opportunities for us to connect with you. Is there one place where all of that is listed? Or are you connecting with Caroline, who schedules us, who gets us information for our schedule to let us know when most of this is?
Commissioner, I don't think we're doing a good job of that.
Okay.
We need to talk into the mic.
We need to get you into the mic.
Okay, the Grangers are not real good about talking about ourselves. And, but we'll work on that. We do have a website, and I'll, I'll talk to the guy that controls that and ask him to include you guys in the mailing when he does a blast.
We need to get that.
And this, this is in what you gave us?
Yes. We'll, we'll make sure we get the information, and we'll try to make a concerted effort to make sure we get that.
Yeah, if we could just get your notes that you.
If we can, we, we have, we get scheduled every week, and if this is included in that scheduling, that would be really helpful to us, because for instance, this Saturday, I, this is the first time I've heard of it, but if it's given to our key scheduler, then it's mentioned and we can judge whether or not it fits into our schedule for that week.
Yeah, so I have a copy of the remarks that have been shared, I'll make sure you all get them. And also, Ken's a good resource, he's always inviting me to some breakfast.
They have great breakfasts, let me tell you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you, at Springwater Grange, it's, it's five dollars. It's all you can eat, the music will be very pleasant, the people. At Springwater Grange, the, the people from the community come and they'll sit there for a half hour, forty-five minutes, maybe an hour, discussing what they're growing, what their issues are, and they get Ken's ear. You might be able to catch Ken in a, in a apron if you come out.
Been known to happen.
Anyway, it's a wonderful event. We don't make an awful lot of money, but we provide a really good service for the community at Springwater Grange.
All right, thank you, Don, appreciate it. Now, we, we were gonna make this a short meeting, because we have people downstairs waiting for us, so we still have some more folks who wanna speak, so Roy and Claire, please join us. Give us your name and where you live. Aren't you, Roy?
My hearing, Jim.
Oh.
I've got some new hearing aids coming in, and I haven't got them yet. So you're gonna have to help me a little bit.
Okay.
Jim, I feel this is a county problem.
Here, I'll.
I got a couple pictures here, you guys can, I can kinda get you going here. Jim, as you very well know, I was involved in the sewer system and put, getting the sewer in the north Clackamas County. You were one of my guys I was working with, okay? You hear me okay?
Yes.
What I'm here about, Jim, is I'm in the, I'm representing the Overland Park Coalition, I've been in it for several years. We do a lot of things like National Night Out, Fight Against Drug, cleaning Johnson Creek, a lot of different things that we do to keep the neighborhood going and keep it in shape. And as you very well know, since we got sewers in there, it is growing with new homes and whatnot. What I'm really here about, Jim, is because of the Asian-Chinese Tree of Heaven. And by the way, I don't call it Tree of Heaven. I believe in God, but I don't believe that plant is, should be called Tree of Heaven, okay? And it's very aggressive, you guys are aware of it.
Tree from hell.
What I've got there is a picture.
It's the tree from hell.
And I need to do something with it.
The tree.
It's.
It spreads like crazy.
Johnson Creek, the intersection of Johnson Creek Boulevard and Bell Avenue, okay? There's property there that the automobile auction place is there in that area. That's what they're doing at the business. I've already talked to those folks about going in there and getting some of this stuff down. Right now, it's very aggressive. It is, it's, it's still manageable, you can drop all of it on the ground. I took down over two hundred of them since the early nineties. I've taken them down for my neighbors, big and small. Five feet in diameter was one of the biggest ones I took down with a machine several years ago, okay? Trying to clean the neighborhood up. What this stuff does is it's gonna be getting into new work that you guys has put in at Bell Avenue. You're also gonna be doing Linwood, okay? This is my neighborhood, okay? I've been in this area since nineteen forty-four. You've got work that you did on Bell Avenue. If you leave this stuff alone where I'm talking about, north of Johnson Creek Boulevard, on Bell Avenue, that stuff is gonna be carried with traffic. It's gonna be brought into an area that you've spent thousands of dollars to improve. I don't want that to happen. You need, I'm here because I'm looking for help on this. I want you to try to help me with it. If you don't give me any money, that's not exactly all what I'm wanting. I want help to get this down. And I'm even willing to spend some of my money to do it.
Okay.
Okay, that's how, that's how serious I am about it. A lot of people don't pay any attention to it, but when I bring it to their attention, then they do be, pay attention. We need to do something about it, Jim.
Okay, well, we'll reach out to our vector control people who are now doing weed, right?
Maybe it's a road, it could be possibly road, road in wastewater, both of them have.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what we can do. It's funny, my grandmother, forty, fifty years ago, gave us one of those trees to plant in our yard.
The Chinese brought it in here years ago, and you find it in their mines and whatnot in California. They, they brought it in here, and it's, I think also, I've done some research on it. I believe that the container's coming from China. We did have quite a few containers going up and down Johnson Creek. There's been some changes, and I don't seem to see those as much. But those seeds, I think, were sitting on the containers and was blowed up, because if you go and look where the chute dumps into the Columbia, you have three modes of transportation moving those containers. I figure that's how some of it got there. People say it isn't, but I don't completely believe that. I believe the container should have been cleaned off, and I tried to do something about that too, by the way. And I think they may be trying to clean them off now, the port.
Okay, well, we'll look into it.
Hey, thanks, Roy.
I appreciate your time, guys, I really do.
Thank you.
I know how he feels about that tree. They call it the tree from hell, and it won't stop spreading. You've gotta get it out.
All right, there you got a lifetime project, Ken. All right.
Yeah, it would be, it's just about.
Claire?
Hello, my name is Claire Coy, and I'm from Gladstone. I'm here to speak tonight just on a couple of topics, and tonight has been very eye-opening to me. I've never been to one of these here, but I've just recently started going to the Gladstone City Council meetings and planning commission meetings and coffee with a counselor and all of those opportunities over the last few months. I began working on a project at my house, and it turned, and it was a concern and something I needed to address with the council. And then it grew into me visiting with two hundred of my neighbors, door-to-door, actually. So I guess I'm just here tonight to basically tell you guys, I'm very interested in being more involved, but I have a daytime job, so the evening meetings are really important to, to me and to a lot of folks that I've talked to. I have a couple of friends that couldn't make it tonight, that just wanted me to make sure you knew that they would also like to see the evening meetings, that would be easier for them to get to. So I wanted to say that. And then just, just the folks that spoke tonight, being possibly forced out of their homes, I'm just blown away. I, I really hope there is something that you can do to help them. It was really touching, the, the cot thing too, it was just, this is, anyway. These were great topics, and being more involved has led me to wanna get more involved, so I'm gonna run for something locally. I'm excited about it. Anyway, that and then the registration fee on the cars. I wanted to talk a little bit about that, because that's, that's gonna be quite a, quite a bump for families. And so I just wanted to bring that up, that's thirty dollars per vehicle, but if you have five cars in your house, that's something to talk about. So I just, I wanted to say that I, I really hope that you send that to the voters, because that's the way to handle that. The voters need to be able to vote on that. So those, those were my thoughts tonight.
So I'm interested in what you had to go to two hundred neighbors about.
I can tell you, so we just recently, actually, I've been talking about it for a long time, but it's about membrane structures in Gladstone. So temporary structures at the home that would cover like a boat or an RV. They wanted to, well, they, they did adopt the new rules, which would basically make it so that, what they were trying to do, I, I should back up, is apply, apply building, building codes to temporary structures, like what would cover an RV. And so my push was that I already had a building, and I wanted to be able to allow grandfathering, which, by the way, they did end up allowing grandfathering in the end, it was adopted the other night. But that was, so as I was going, as I, I talked to my neighbors about my problem, but then I started hearing from them that they didn't agree, and then it got me out into other neighborhoods. And in the end, that's what the project was, but it just, I heard a lot of, wow, I wasn't aware of that when I was out talking to neighbors, and it just got me like, why isn't anybody aware? Where are we missing the mark on communicating meetings? And I just, just started to go to more meetings, and then when you're at the meetings, you learn so much. And the, the end result is be more involved so that you can make sure you're talking to people and that everyone has the information.
Okay, and, and I remember that issue in Milwaukee when.
It's something.
State Council was looking at.
And it's something they've been talking about for a lot of years there in Gladstone, but, I mean, in the end, it came out, I think, fifty percent in our favor, but I just, I just wanted to mention a couple of things to you tonight.
Okay.
And thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome, Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, your first point out, night meetings, I, I agree. Something that we implemented in the first year that I was here, and that's been rolled back. And I think we've brought that to, the boards decided to make it on the fifth Thursdays. And I looked at the calendar for twenty nineteen, and there's probably only one fifth Thursday that's gonna fit the schedule, which is actually probably November of next year. And that's probably inadequate, in my opinion, so I'm hoping that maybe we can actually look at dedicating some Thursday night meetings.
We do have an evening meeting on January thirty-first, so, because that will be the fifth Thursday in the month of January two thousand nineteen.
Yep, and I think the other one is in August in our summer break, and the other one's in December, I think. If I looked at the right calendar, I could be wrong. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Absolutely, thank you for your guys' time.
And you must know Les Poole.
Yes.
One of the things I was gonna say is, you know, we did have night meetings for a long time. Attendance at many of them was just about zero, and that's why we, we didn't do it. So we decided to do various other things, which I think we have dropped off. But we're gonna have a new administrator, you heard Don's retiring, and it'll be a, a discussion.
Yeah.
There's one in, there's also one in May, one in August.
So one is not exactly.
Well, one, the one that we can make, but I'm, I must have looked at the wrong calendar, so I was looking for the fifth Thursday.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Les Poole?
In October.
Sounds like four or five.
Four.
Yep, yeah.
Four? All right, thanks.
Good evening, Les Poole. Yeah, I live in Gladstone, and she lives down the street, and membrane structures, her structure is a steel structure, it wasn't even a membrane structure. So sometimes when you start working through the neighborhood and working through the system, you find out the details matter. And it was just a pleasure to have folks in the neighborhood show up and participate. And I, I would, I would, I would obviously agree with her comments about evening meetings. I've, I've been a force for them, and attendance hasn't always been zero. We don't need to argue that right now, but it totally depends on what's on the agenda. And given the, the real light agenda and the time of the year that we're in, we got a good turnout tonight. I, I too sat there, and it takes a lot for my, for my jaw to drop, but folks, don't give up. Don't get hardened, don't make too many demands. Just hang in there and realize that you're the picture of what we all knew we were gonna see a few years ago when we were talking about it. I was involved in the ordinance, I certainly didn't create it, but it's an awkward situation for everybody, and, and you certainly got our feelings, and share that message. If I could help you, I would. A couple of other quick things. One, I noticed a, a small legal notice that was published the day before Thanksgiving announcing that the Transportation Department was holding meetings on the possibility of the vehicle registration fee. And the very first meeting was the night before the election. That gives people an uncomfortable feeling, because out of the four hundred thousand people that live in this county, I wonder how many know that they're already having meetings about a vehicle registration fee. So outreach and public notice is critical. If people don't know what's going on, they feel left out. And when they feel left out, away goes our trust. That's not directed personally to any of you. You're not in charge of the process, but ultimately, you will be. Ultimately, you're gonna decide what happens. And when that point comes, the previous speaker mentioned putting it out for a public vote, and obviously, being who I am, I, I would certainly encourage that that happened. That's, it's just something that needs to happen. The last thing I would mention is that I got a call the day before yesterday from some frantic folks. Every year, the Milwaukee Lions puts together food and gift baskets for the needy, and I've been involved. They work through the Elks, and this year, they've got enough for about four hundred and fifty. And you can imagine needing a forklift and a place to assemble and put it all together. And when you find out you've got the forklift but don't have the building, you're in trouble. So who do you call but Les Poole, because he's a material handling specialist, and everybody in the county knows him. So I'm here to say that we are looking for seven or eight thousand square feet. This is for the Lions Project, Milwaukee Lions. We would need it early next week, it's a short notice. And on Saturday, a week from this Saturday, volunteers will be delivering those assembled. And on Saturday, a week from this Saturday, volunteers will be delivering those assembled boxes. I may have a location secured. I'll certainly be in touch with the county, but if anyone that happens to be watching or any of you know of a location, you know, somewhere near 205 or 212, where some warehouse space could be utilized, it would be a big help. It's kind of short notice, but I'm doing everything I can, and I'll follow up with the county. I realize your office is closed tomorrow, but anything anyone could do would be great, and certainly, anything we can do to make folks' Christmases better, I'm all for. We've spent a lot of time up here. Thank you very much this evening. I appreciate it.
Les, I've been trying to have lunch with you. Mary Jo's been trying to get ahold of you. Please respond, and I'd like to sit and talk to you about the VRF.
Yeah, that would be fine, and next week is just crazy.
Oh, yeah.
But if you want to get together before Christmas, we could do that.
All right, thanks.
Thanks.
With that, we need to move on to the consent agenda. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. We are way over what we had anticipated, so hopefully, the commission will be very short on Commissioner Communications.
Well, we can delay that and just take care of business.
Yep.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number 14 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for operation as a local public health authority for Clackamas County. Approval of Amendment Number Two to an Intergovernmental Agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Consumer and Business Services. Senior Health Insurance Benefit Assistance. Approval of Amendment Number Three to an Agency Services Contract with Catholic Community Services of Western Washington for Community-Based Emergency Department Crisis Stabilization. Approval of Amendment Number Two to a Professional Services Agreement with Laboratory Corporation of America for Laboratory Services for Clackamas County Health Centers Division. Approval of Amendment Number One to the Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon for a Revised Dental Home Payment Model. Approval of a Revenue Intergovernmental Agreement with Children, Family and Community Connections with the State of Oregon. Housing and Community Services for Weatherization Services. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement with Multnomah County for Billing Support Services for Authorization and Claims. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, consent to the annexation of a portion of Southeast Darrow Road to the City of Estacada. Approval of Amendment Number Two to the Local Agency Agreement Number 29634 with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Sunnyside Road Adaptive Signals System Project. Under Elected Officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. A Board Order Approving the Cancellation of Delinquent Manufacturer-Structure Personal Property Tax Accounts. A Board Order Approving the Cancellation of Delinquent Business Personal Property Tax Accounts. Approval of the Clackamas County Jail Population Control Plan under Disaster Management. Approval of Fiscal Year 18 State Homeland Security Grant Program Agreement between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon for a Regional Fuel Shortage Plan for Disaster Planning. Under Business and Community Services, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County, the Library District of Clackamas County, and Library Cities. Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement between Metro and Clackamas County Parks for the Development of the Casero Natural Area Master Plan. Under County Council, approval of Board Orders Delegating Signing Authority for Contracts and Delegating Signing Authority for Intergovernmental Agreements. And under the Library District of Clackamas County, approval of Amendment Number Three to the Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement between Clackamas County, the Library District of Clackamas County, and Library Cities. That concludes today's consent agenda.
So Mary, I assume that the jail population refers to population in the jail.
Yes.
Population control in the jail.
Yes.
All right. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the housing, excuse me. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any one wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
No, I don't. Just want to do a special call-out to all the staff and efforts and the people who participated in bringing together this approval of Amendment Number Three to the Cooperative Intergovernmental Agreement between the county and the library cities. That was not an easy task, and I see some staff in the back. I want to just thank everyone, anyone watching that was involved in that. A lot of assistant input, Eldak, number of things, it's been, it's a great, great work.
Great, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries. Now, Mary, where is the pie?
Third floor.
369.
Third floor, 369.
Okay, just for the audience, if you want some pie, it's downstairs, one floor, and please feel free to join us. And with that, we'll go to Commissioner Communications. You're up first.
No, this is Don.
Did I forget something? Oh, Don.
I'm going to suspend my remarks, so we can get down and have pie.
I think we should suspend our remarks unless there's anything burning. My only comments were wonderful citizen communication, looking forward to eating some pie with our volunteers for the Veterans Village, embracing that. We have a lot of folks here engaging. Those were my only comments, Mr. Chiff.
Okay, Ken wants to do the dog.
Let's do that, and then that would be it for me. This is Lizzie. Hopefully, she'll come up on the screen.
Coming up in just a sec. Oh, there she is.
There we go. She's a 10-year-old American pit bull terrier mix, but don't let her age fool you. She is still a spunky girl who's ready for adventure. She will do best with a family who will be excited about exercising her with training and games. She would appreciate daily walks. She will do best in a home without cats and with children at least 13 years old. If she sounds like a fit for you, then please go and visit her today. For more information about Lizzie and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Paul, did you want to add in?
I think Commissioner Fisher covered it. The pie is really actually all about our volunteer recognition and appreciation for all those that pitched in on the Veterans Village project through the last year or so, so that's what that pie is all about. So we're going to go down there and join them, so please join us.
Martha, you good?
I'm good. I'll save a lot of things I have, but I will save that until next meeting.
All right, good. So with that, we're pie.